The Board of County Commissioners meeting for January 8, 2018. And we will start off by asking Ms. Tammy Holdstill if she would lead us in a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Holdstill, and good Happy New Year, everyone. I hope all are doing well. With that, we will go to Madam Clerk for the roll call.
Certainly, Marsha Burke Bigler, Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung, Vice Chair.
Present.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Von Hartung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Deputy District Attorney Nate Edwards.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a call, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with that, we'll go to public comment, Mr. Manager.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard on this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission's agenda. The Commissioner will also hear a public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are being made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. We'll start with Mr. Win Ross.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Win Ross, and I've worked in water resources in this area for over forty years, for Desert Research Institute, for Lawrence Livermore Laboratories on the Nevada Test Site, for the U.S. Geological Survey in Carson City, and for the last twenty-three years as a senior hydrologist with Washoe County. And the first nineteen of those years were great. I did important work. I had functional management, and I was treated as a professional. That all ended when Washoe County Department of Water Resources merged with Tomwa, and somehow Dave Solaro and Duane Smith became my management. Now, I should have seen the dark clouds on the horizon when, after the merger, Dave Solaro assigned me to my new job and warned me, predicted, and I quote, "You'll work for five or six months, and you will be miserable, and you will fail." So my options were to take this job or quit the county, a job that I would fail. It's worth noting that this was an entry-level position, hydrologic position, and that I have, to my knowledge, twice as many hydrology degrees as the rest of the county combined. And I'd worked over forty years in hydrology and never failed at a job. And it's been my repeated observation over the last four years that Dave Solaro and Duane Smith are unprofessional, unethical, dishonest, and in general, hubristic. And for that reason, I want out. I'm done. And the only thing that's preventing me from giving notice today is I need a meeting with the county manager, with Dave Solaro in the room, because he will be the topic of conversation. I've tried to arrange this meeting many times with, over email, phone, in person in the county manager's office, but have yet to receive a response. So that's why I'm here today. John, it's in balls in your court. And I want to make it, since I have a few seconds left, just want to make it clear that I mean no disrespect to the Central Truckee Meadows Remediation District, the people I work with now. They have an important mission, and it's executed by competent, hard-working professionals. My beef is with David Solaro and Duane Smith. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. For the record, the water's still there. I'm still here. Reflections for, and Happy New Year. Reflections for 2018. A few phrases that come to mind. Tired of hearing about Lemon Valley. Residents are disingenuous. Residents need an education. It's their fault they live in a flood zone. No veteran should be homeless. I'm tired of you people. Begone with you and I hope a house falls on you too. And last but not least, I'm going to sue you. Negative action by Washoe County. Stopped assisting the residents that have been out of their homes since January, February of 2017. Approval of Lemon Valley Heights and the denial of the appeal. Overturned a unanimous denial of planning commission for Prado Ranch and approved it. Too many violations of the open meeting law to even discuss. No respect for floodplains. The excess expense of protection for an antiquated Lemon Valley sewer plant. No positive progress to address flooding by all waters within the Lemon Valley hydrological basin. On the positive side of 2018, residents all over Washoe County pulled together. They have come before you and said, "No. We do not want dangerous, damaging growth." They have come together and pooled money for appeal of the Lemon Valley Heights. Then they donated money for the judicial review of Prado North. Then we also have the pro bono for Lemon Valley Heights judicial review, and both of those judicial reviews are still in litigation. There's something to say about that. Where do we and I go for 2019? To have a positive action of the following. Removing the floodwaters of Swan Lake. Preventing future flooding of Swan Lake. Preservation of floodplains to help prevent flooding. Getting the residents back in their homes that have been out since February of 2017. Having all governmental entities take initiative to correct the disparities in the Lemon Valley hydrological basin. That would be stop overcharging the aquifers. Too much affluent discharge. Overdevelopment in a closed basin. Inadequate or non-functioning detention-retention ponds. Sewer plant breaches to create harmful algae blooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holdstill. Next is Ms. Denise Ross.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Good morning.
Okay. I think most of you were here when I did my presentation on the Lemon Valley Elementary School and showed you the horrific pictures and the conditions that were going on. I'm wondering if anybody's done any follow-up work to that, because since then, Mr. Cleos and I have been banned from going into the school without a private escort. We have been denied the opportunity to take any pictures of any more of the conditions in that school. To my knowledge, none of the work was done on repairing the asbestos, tearing it down, and getting rid of it all in this past winter break session that they've had. It was another missed opportunity to get this taken care of. Kitty Jung, if you would possibly look into, I'm sorry, I don't mean to misaddress. If you would possibly look with the Health Department, look at what the comparison is with the children in the absences compared to other schools. What kind of statistics there are for kids that have asthma, for kids that don't get well? Because I know when my son went to that school, he was constantly, and I mean constantly, ill. Now, they say that because they sprayed over the asbestos that there's no danger. Yet the other schools that they've done the repairs on and taken and had to tear apart actually literally tear down the walls, because the asbestos is not just in the ceilings, it's in the walls. Now, we can all keep saying that it's been addressed, it's been taken care of, and that it's not dangerous. Let me ask you, would you want your child going to that school? It's dangerous. It's not healthy, and somebody needs to look into it. That school needs to be repaired. There's funds. The funds have been allocated. Mr. Circe came up here and took full responsibility. Let's make sure that he's done his job, that he has taken care of all of these children, that this problem with asbestos has been dealt with. Children can throw things up on the ceiling, even if it's been sprayed. It's not healthy. It comes down on other children. It's asbestos. It's deadly. If it doesn't affect their health today, I guarantee you, in twenty, thirty years from now, it's going to be just like all of the methacillioma victims. It's got to be fixed. If you could do that and make sure that there's not any kind of crazy things happening with the children, I'd appreciate it, and I'm sure the parents would appreciate it, because I don't want to have to stand out there in a picket sign saying, "Do you know what your children are tending in?"
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here on this issue. Mr. Levi Hooper. Good morning, and Happy New Year to you.
Thank you all. How is everybody? I am Levi Hooper. I am the voice of the downtrodden. I've been in Reno for years, helping the homeless as much as I can. I just want to start today with a prayer for the homeless that are, that passed away this year out in the weather. And my dad passed away last month on the second. So I just want to say a prayer for my dad and that, too. So what I want to talk about today is the new RTC bus pass system and the money, the way it's going. Well, the way it used to be when you got on the bus, it was $2, and you got a transfer for an hour and fifteen minutes, you know, and you could go anywhere, get on any bus or whatever for that hour and fifteen minutes. And then they changed it now that for $2, you can get on one bus and go one way, and that's it. Or you could pay $3 and get a twelve-hour pass, which is okay if the buses would ever show up. You know, I wait up, I wait at, buses are supposed to be there every twelve minutes for hour and forty-five minutes. Buses aren't showing up at stops. I posted on YouTube, I've had a whole bunch of people that are at bus stops complaining because there's forty people at each bus stop to be picked up, so there's no room on the buses, no room at all. It's ridiculous. It's crazy. And there's no way, I don't understand why they changed the money, or the money system, because RTC has to have plenty of money. They got more riders than they could have on the buses, where they're actually making people wait for the next bus to come. And then people are missing work and all that because of this. And then, but changing a bus pass for, it used to be, let me go back, $2 for a transfer for an hour and fifteen minutes anywhere you want to go in Reno, or you pay $5 on the bus for a twenty-four-hour pass. Makes sense, I thought, you know? Plenty of money going to RTC that way for gas. Now it's, you got $3 for a twelve-hour pass, you know, and it's only good till midnight that night. Which I think, you know, if you guys were going to switch it up like that, you might as well make that twenty-four hours. It makes some more sense that way, at least, you know, and maybe hire some more bus drivers. It's crazy. An hour and forty-five minutes at a rapid stop? Crazy. I've never heard of that. But that's what I got to say about that and the bus system. I ride the bus three to five times a day, so I'm not, like, talking out of turn here. I ride the bus a lot. So anyway, like I was saying about the homeless, though, any help you guys want to give me towards the homeless, it's always appreciated. You know, I do everything I can. I'm on my own here in Reno. My family's back in Florida, so I just do all I can on my own here, and all philanthropically. And that's all I have to say for today. And the no, I haven't noticed the no-smoking signs posted at the bus stops yet either. People just puff away there. They don't care. So that's our thing. Anyway, that's all I have to say. God bless, everybody.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Sam D'Nae.
Sam D'Nae D'Nae, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying P-52 bombers and F-4 Phantoms, and I repeat myself now and then for the few new people that we might have in the audience. After I was finished flying with, in the Air Force, I was a pilot for the greatest airlines in the history of the world, Pan American World Airways. You might have heard of them. They were blown out of business over Lockerbie by the terrorists. But that was only half of the story that most people do not know. After 9/11, the next terrorist attack on America, our government gave United and American and Delta and all the other airlines billions of dollars. Gave them billions of dollars. On the other hand, with Pan American World Airways, instead of helping them, they threw them under the bus. They took our operating capital and put it in a fund that eventually went to the families of the victims of the terrorist attack. And Pan Am was unable to continue flying because their money was being taken away from them, and that caused the end of Pan American World Airways, one of the greatest companies in the history, one of the greatest and most patriotic companies in the history of America. It is a deathly, deadly, diabolical shame, and I don't talk about that very much, but now I have to. It is just a horrible thing that what is done to Pan Am and our government does not give a dingly dang. At any rate, after Pan Am was, my airline was blown out of business, I started my crusade coming to these government meetings. And I've been to virtually every government meeting in this area since 1994. Six thousand public testimonies. I'm responsible for ninety-two percent of the good things. I said that yesterday, and somebody kind of chuckled back there, and I said, "Yeah, nice smiley face," and when I saw him in the back, and they said, "Sam, no." I think it's more like ninety, ninety-four percent of the good things. As a little bit of a non sequitur segue, I was watching the Washoe County Show the other day, and the county manager, Mr. Slaughter, who I actually helped get his job, was up here briefing you guys on how his operation was going. And Mr. Hartung came up with one of the most erudite statements I've ever said. He gave his credit to his dear father, who said, "Son, surround yourself with people smarter than you are." Congratulations, Mr. Hartung, you did it! Just kidding. Mr. Hartung's a good man. He's got IQ. Anyway, I've been trying to surround myself with people smarter than me, but I can't find any.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nae.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Greg Hudson. Good morning, Mr. Hudson.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I'll just be blunt. CPS has kidnapped our grandchildren. In October of 2017, our son and daughter-in-law could not get their act together to save their lives. We were granted custody of our two small grandchildren in November of 2017, and we went through training and became licensed foster care parents. And while we were there, we learned that, they told us emphatically, "If you have your relatives' children, they will harass you 24/7. They will never give you a moment's rest." Furthermore, we were also taught, and they beat this to, this dead horse till it was bloody, that it was very important to take respite, vacation time away from the children. Well, everything went fine with the first two caseworkers. The third one, however, we both got a very bad gut feeling about instantly. It turned out my girlfriend complained to the lady who was training her on numerous occasions that she didn't trust her, and all the complaints were simply dismissed as, "She's new, just give her a chance." After her training was over, things got worse. She became very condescending, threatening, abusive, and she would talk down to us like we were children. We went to her supervisor on numerous occasions, and each time we did, all of our complaints were simply dismissed out of hand. But we saw their true colors when we had to get the social security numbers for these kids for our subsidized home loan. They treated us like criminals. They stomped around. They finally just said, "Here, copy them down." They acted as if they had lost some sort of a battle, and it stuck in the craw, and they never accepted it. Now, when we arranged to take vacation, they were openly hostile, as they were when we went to get social security numbers. The vacations were approved, but after the first vacation, we found that a lot of the clothing items were missing, and we went and talked to the respite providers, two of them, and they just weren't working with us. And of course, our caseworker Brenda Seraphin was more than happy to take their complaints and use them against us. They knew that, she knew that our son and daughter-in-law would complain about us bitterly, and she used those complaints and acted so shocked that they would complain about us, but we had their kids, and they blamed us for them losing their kids, of course. And we were on our second vacation that she approved of ahead of time. She went and talked to the respite provider and told them that we were liars, cheats, and thieves, and I have text messages to that effect. And she got on the phone with me and tried to pick a fight with me, and when we got back, she had taken the children and said, "You're never going to find them, and how dare you be gone this long?" And yet she had approved these vacations ahead of time. We have gone to everyone in CPS above her, all the way up to Ryan. We have talked to our state senator. We've talked to our state Assemblywoman. We've sent letters to the governor. We tried to get ahold of Adam Laxalt, but he was too busy campaigning for governor. And what we want is, we want our grandchildren back. And we want these people at CPS who, quite frankly, have acted like mafia thugs. I honestly believe that somebody told them that they wanted those grandchildren. We've had numerous people tell us, even through, even people that work for CPS, how beautiful these two children are, and that they would love to adopt them. And I believe that Brenda was told, "You get us those children no matter what it takes." And we want our grandchildren back. And our little granddaughter, who's four now, asks her grandma all the time. Grandma, who am I coming?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Appreciate you coming forward. And next is Ms. Joanna Lyta.
Hi. My name's John Lyta, and yes, I'm the grandmother of my precious grandchildren that CPS took. I miss them daily, and I even couldn't even finish decorating our tree this year because my precious granddaughter, when we first got her, they really did not have a Christmas tree in their house every year. And she was three, and when we pulled the Christmas tree out the first year we had her, she got so excited, her mouth dropped to the ground. And she loved to decorate the house and everything. And I didn't even get to spend Christmas with her. They give me only one week with her, an hour. And the foster mom has to sit in with us, because they think I'm going to poison her mind, and they tell me, "I taught her how to lie." And, I mean, and teach her a song that my son would be dead and killed. I would never do that to my granddaughter or my son. I just want them to get better so they could get their kids back. And that's what I would tell the judge every time. And I miss my grandson. I miss his first walk. I miss his first words after they took him. And Brenda said I had a criminal record, and I never was arrested a day of my life. And they just sit there and bring up more stuff to me, and every time she calls me, she tells me, "I'm never going to get my grandchildren back." Every call. She pushes it every time, and they just push more and more every day. And I want my grandchildren back, and they just constantly tell me I'm not getting them back. And I work with them every day and try to work with them. They say I didn't work with them. I worked with them. I took my granddaughter to get her teeth fixed. I worked, took them and got my grandson's hernia, double hernia fixed. I made these appointments to get them fixed, because my son and his wife did not do what they were supposed to do. And I just want them back. I tried to get her into school and asked them for help. They would not help me. Brenda just kept pushing things. She wouldn't answer my calls. She still won't answer my calls. I called her three times since Friday. I called them twice, Friday, Monday, and everything, and they will not return my call. I want to thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Lyta.
For helping us.
Thank you for coming forward. With that, I see no more public comment, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. So we have, our district attorney has informed us that there's a mistake on our agenda that does not allow for public comment. The language should be "for possible action" on the next three items. So, Mr. District Attorney, would you like to, do you have a comment you want to make, or you want me to just hold them off, just?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I think you've already summarized what the issue is. The "for possible action" phrase that is required by Chapter 241, Section 020 of the Nevada revised statutes appears to have been inadvertently left off of the first block of items on the agenda. It does, however, appear on Item 8 for possible action for the consent items and the other items on the agenda. So without that language there, it would be my recommendation that you, as the chair, simply make an announcement that the next three items will be postponed to a future agenda.
Thank you very much. So we will postpone Items 4, 5, and 6 until the last meeting of January, and they will be on the agenda, I don't know what day that is. Do you have that date?
Twenty-second.
The twenty-second?
January twenty-second.
So these will, these three items will be postponed until January twenty-second. I do believe all commissioners will be available for the twenty-second meeting. Commissioner Hartung? Commissioner Herman? Okay. Because we need to have all, and Commissioner, Lucy's shaking his head, so I know he's going to be. Commissioner Jung, Vice Chair Jung? Okay. You'll be available for the twenty-second meeting. We need to have all commissioners here to do this, so. Okay. Good. All right. So those four, those three items are postponed, so we will move on to Item Number Seven. Mr. Manager.
Item seven is our commissioner, county manager's announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay. Vice Chair Jung.
Thank you. I have a couple of requests. First of all, Merry New Year to all of the citizens of Washoe County and the great state of Nevada. I have a couple of things that I would like to ask for further information on. I need an appointment or a meeting, Mr. Manager, with a subject matter expert on opportunity zones in the unincorporated county and how I can leverage those, whom I can help with that. But I actually want a subject matter expert who helped craft the legislation, who knows how it's been put into effect. So if we could find somebody more maybe at the state level or at the federal level, people who have handled, I don't want somebody just reading me the law, because there are a lot of questions out there from developers who are looking to do some affordable housing, and I just feel very ignorant on how, I can read them the law, too. It means nothing to me. So if I could get how it's been put into best practices, what it's done nationwide, where we've used it, I would really appreciate that. I also would like a report from the RTC or from our RTC board members about transit, what the prices are, what is the capacity, what routes are working, which routes are not. I get many complaints from constituents that the buses appear empty. And now I just heard from a constituent that they're overfilled. So if I could get a subject matter expert, preferably from the RTC, to give me that information, that would be great. I also want a report from the RTC on roads and what roads they consider themselves responsible for and which ones they do not consider themselves responsible for. And finally, I want to see a regional overlay of where they've invested in roads and where they have not, because there has been some Reno City Council members who have reached out to me to ask me to help them, feeling that they are not getting properly represented as well as unincorporated Washoe County citizens who also pay the exact same gas tax, who don't believe they are also being represented in the reconstruction of their roads. And in light of the most recent storm, very wet storm, you can tell your roads are pretty torn up at this point. And where, and I also want to know what their maintenance schedule is and how it dovetails with our road maintenance schedule. And then finally, I would like to have a meeting arranged to do an update on Swan Lake and what is the next steps for the giant pond that has not been eradicated. And I would like to do that with Councilwoman Bonnie Weber. She reached out over the holidays and also wants to work with the county to find a permanent solution to a problem that has turned into permanency. And I would like Governor Sisalak's staff to be there. When I met with him privately before, this is a couple weeks ago, before the holidays and his staff, I did bring up that we really need the funding that the state has at this point of our emergency funds that we have outlaid and have not been yet reimbursed. So if we could also have one of their So, if we could also have one of their major staff members there who could provide liaison, and not just liaison, again, somebody that can give me definitive answers as to what the mitigation plans are, the reimbursement plans, and really next best steps, because as wet as this winter already is, we're already almost at normal for January, and this is very early in January. I want, I want to see some real solutions. Pump the water out, dig people out, whatever we need to do, standing water in an area that has been identified by development and is getting further developed by both the city and the county. I want some answers of what, and maybe we can ask the developers to do something in terms of the water standing there. I know you don't trust the developers, but that might be a concession that, and Commissioner Herman, too. I would love to be in that meeting, just for strength in numbers. But Commissioner Weber, I don't know, she meant to reach out to you. Her mother's been ill. She wants to, the three of us start to get to work on the North Valleys, so I'm happy to help, and I'm sure it goes all the way down to the South Valleys. I noticed that my favorite camping place, Washto Lake, is bigger than ever, beautiful, but that was lapping right up at the major interstate as well during our major floods. So, those are my three requests. And Madam, I've already set up an appointment with Angie Taylor, who is the Washto County School District Trustee, who represents my area, so I'm going to her. I believe she represents you, too, but, and we will get moving forward on your elementary school and being treated equity, equitably across the county, because we're all paying that extra sales tax as well. And one would argue that people in more working-class districts pay a larger proportion of sales tax than people that don't live in working-class districts. To put it very mildly, it's a regressive tax. So, I'm with you, and we will work for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Next is Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Commissioner Jung covered some good stuff. I'll go sort of a different direction. Mr. Manager would like to set up a meeting with Mr. Ross, Mr. Solero, and Mr. Smith, just discuss what his issues are, have a look at that. I'm wondering why he wasn't moved over to Tamwa. That's, most of our staff at Department of Water Resources was moved to Tamwa, so I'd like to know basically why he wasn't, he wasn't taken on at Tamwa, because it seems like a great resource for the region. Ms. Howell, please send us a summary on Mr. Hudson and Mr. Lyta's issue, if you would. That would, that would be wonderful. Mr. Smith, I see you sitting in the audience. Stop signs at Shelby, a three-way at Shelby and Richard Springs. I know you've indicated that it doesn't seem to be necessary. I would argue that traffic does back up on Richard Springs, and so I'd like to have a public conversation about why we can't do that. I don't think it's a harm to put a three-way in there and let that traffic meter through. I just don't see that as a harm. Commissioner Jung, we will put David Jickling in touch on the bus issues from RTC. And then, I paid my first alarm bill to Cry Wolf, but one of the things that I noticed on the website, and it's okay, I get this, I paid with my credit card, not until I actually paid with my credit card did I see that there was a $3 fee for the use of my credit card. Nowhere did that show up, and that's okay. It's no, it's not a big deal that I paid that $3 fee. It doesn't make or break me. It is, however, important that people know that they're going to be charged that fee, and so I think that, that we need to, there needs to be possibly some changes, and it's not through Washto County's website, it's through Cry Wolf's website. And so, I, hopefully, Ms. Circe will be able to help us with that. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, welcome. Have, you know, Happy New Year to everybody. Nice to see everybody back and in good spirits. I'd like to kind of point out some good, positive news that we have, you know, kind of endured over the, over the holidays and the end of last year in 2018. You know, we ended up in a good spot. And really where I want to point out is with Washto County and Washto County Human Services, we had some significant, made some significant headway as it pertains to adoptions and that this year, and we had a record year, and it was tremendous. And we did a number of phenomenal things in Washto County, and I want to make a huge shout-out to Amber Howell and her team at Human Services. In 2018, they found permanent homes for 223 kids. Two hundred and twenty-three kids found their forever home last year. It was a record year for us. We've had more kids than we've ever done in adoption, and it's all due to the great work that Amber Howell and her team and staff have done over there. So, a big round of applause to your team, and, but not just Human Services. This is also, I mean, like I said many times, this takes a collaboration between the courts, public defenders, the DA's office, a number of individuals that find these, and so it is a heartfelt thanks and gratitude to all those members that have worked tirelessly to get these kids into their permanent homes. So, that was a huge deal. And then, so, thank you for that. And then, I was going to take care of the discussion that Commissioner Jung, Vice Chair Jung, had in regards to the road rehabilitation. A number of the roads are different because of where they lie, and so what we'll be do, as Commissioner Hartung pointed out, we'll get David Jickling for the transit issues, but we'll also get Brian, our Director of, our Director of Roads and Rehabilitation from RTC, to come and give a presentation as well to discuss that. And with that, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Commissioner Herman, I don't see your name on my list, or, but I thought I saw it on there, and now it's not on there. Manager, hang on, yes. Commissioner Lucy, hang on just one minute.
Thing I would, would request is if we could get a meeting, I know we did swear on the new sheriff yesterday, but I know he's probably drinking from a fire hose today, but if we could get a meeting with him, I'd like to talk to him about some upgraded, what, patrol, thank you, God dang, patrol of Mount Rose Highway in connection with NHP, because we still are having problems with people making illegal U-turns due to the right-on-only onto Mount Rose Highway out of Rolling Hills. People are coming on, making an illegal U-turn across two lanes of traffic, and then going back up the hill instead of going down to the Wedge Parkway intersection. So, we need to get some, if NHP can't patrol that properly, it's a public safety issue, we definitely need to talk to the sheriff and see if we can get some extra patrol out there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. I, that actually was on my agenda also. Mr. Manager? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Herman, go ahead.
All right, thank you. And I wanted to thank all of you for putting me in here for another four years. I appreciate that. And also for all the nice Merry Christmas wishes. My desk is covered with them, and I just, they're so pretty. Thank you. Okay, so, I just wanted to make a note that where the National Guard has had their housing instead, they will no longer be leasing that land or that property, and, and just wondering if maybe, you know, we could take care of some of our affordable housing needs rentals, that sort of thing. So, I'd like to have somebody look into that. And the grandparents that were here a little while ago, I was wondering what we could do about that situation. So, I'll leave that with our county manager. We'll discuss that. I have a couple of items regarding the, some consent items, but I can do that at the consent item section.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman.
Chairman Jung, because of setting up, you know, getting ready to set up that meeting for Lemon Valley. That's very excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. So, I have a couple of points. I'm also concerned about the Lemon Valley School and the level of illness, and I really would like to see that report. Vice Chair Jung, when you get a chance to get something from the Health District on what that?
Health District issue. Thank you.
Okay, well, I agree that it's, it's a school issue, but from a health perspective, it, I think, is a Health District issue. At least, that would be my personal opinion, is that the Health District should be looking into whether or not we have children in a school that are getting sick more frequently from asbestos. I know in the case of a school in my district, they went in and removed all the asbestos during the summer, so why haven't they done that in this school also? I think that's a good question that needs to be answered, and I'd like to see the answer to it. There is, we are, I think it's already on our agenda to get a report on Swan Lake and where we are going, what the plan is and what we're doing with it this year. I believe that's on our agenda for February, Mr. Manager, so please correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's where it's at, is an agenda in February to talk about that. So, I think we're all looking forward to hearing that. I would like someone to look into snowplow in Incline Village. I know we have new, some new drivers up there, and I know that we have some people getting new areas, new areas that they've never driven before, but I was up there before this storm, but after the last storm, and frankly, I'll tell you that most of the roads, most of the side roads and a lot of the really connecting roads still had ice and snow on them. They had not, the ice and snow had been graded, but it had not been cleaned off. And it was, you know, a week between storms. It certainly seems to me it should have been totally cleared by that time. So, if someone would please look into that to see how they're doing, I know, Mr. Smith, you're here in the audience, and if you'd look into that and make sure that they go in, they clean the snow away, but then they need to go back and make sure that the roads are clear, because they're dangerous if they're not. And so, I'd like someone to look into that. I'd also like a report on where we are, Ms. Howell, with the Senior Center, and what do we need, what else do we need to do there? Are there some other things we need to spend some time on working there? So, if I could get a report on that, I would appreciate that. And that would be the Senior Center and Incline Village, so. I did also talk with, with City Councilwoman Bonnie Weber, and so, about the issue and, with the, a couple of things to do with Swan Lake, so, and she wanted to meet with me, but as she's meeting with the two of you, I know you guys will handle it, so I will step back out of that and leave that to you. I think that's all. Any, Commissioner Hartung, I see you're back on the list.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You triggered. We received some information, and this is, this happens every year, and I don't know if there's anything that we can do about this, Mr. Smith. I don't see Mr. Crump in the audience, sadly, but perhaps he's listening in. When the snowplows plow and they create these berms in front of these driveways, and it literally has blocked some residents in, and so I don't know, I don't know what the solution is in those kinds of things, I, in that scenario. I know that in, on our own street, that when the, when the plow comes through, it can be, it can be quite the challenge to get over it. I've always been able to get over it with a, with a four-wheel-drive vehicle, but there has been some complaints, especially with folks that cannot shovel or are too elderly to shovel or don't have a four-wheel-drive vehicle. So, let's get back to me and let me know what we can do on that. And then, one thing that I neglected to mention on Cry Wolf that I'd like Ms. Circe to also look into, and I apologize for overlooking this, they're not, they're not honoring the senior discount any longer. So, I've had, I've had a couple seniors tell me that they, they paid their bill, but they didn't give them the senior discount, so let's, let's look into that. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Herman?
Thank you. Commissioner Jung brought something to my attention, reminded me about something about the same subject matter that you two commissioners are talking about, and that is the berms that the snowplow makes as they go by. I realize they can't stop and do every driveway as they're going along, but, you know, it, it needs to get done somehow, you know, for those people that can't get out and need to get to work and that sort of thing. We're not real good at snowplowing in this country because we don't have it every, every year. Sometimes we don't even have any, but if, as long as, you know, it wouldn't be quite so bad if some people, and, you know, everybody has a bad day, but, you know, if the snowplow driver is rude to the people about it, then, you know, that's not good. So, that's something I'd like to have the personnel take care of and make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Manager Slaughter?
Just wanted to mention, as way of future agenda item for Commissioner Jung, she mentioned the opportunity zone. That's actually on our January 15 agenda. We do have a regional expert who will be here to present that, and then following that, then if we have follow-ups, we can, we can go from there. And then, the discussion about snowplow, I will, I will talk with staff. We will get some answers for all of the concerns that have been expressed. I know 311 was receiving phone calls, as they always do during snowplow. We don't get storms like this frequently, and when we do, we all remember that it's, it's not easy to get around in snow. So, we will, we will follow up with all of that and get answers back to all of you on those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. One last thing I would like to ask, if we could also move Item 27 to the January 22nd meeting. There's some more work that needs to be done on that and some more discussions, so if we could move that till then. Okay? Anything else, commissioners? All right, we will close Item 7 and move to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Yes, today's consent agenda is Item 8 on, on the agenda. Those are Items 8A through Item 8E3.
Okay. Any commissioners with requests? I think, Commissioner Herman, you had some stuff you wanted to talk about, so.
Is a, on the minutes of the November 27th meeting, Mr. Linebaugh would like to make it very clear that he does not live on the property on Court's Lane. He doesn't, he, he has sold that years ago, but he sold it on a real estate contract, so his name is still on there. So, he's an 80-year-old man, and he's out there trying to clean up all this stuff for, for somebody that's not, that brought it there. So, they just want to make sure that was cleared up, because he doesn't want to get blamed for living there when he doesn't live there, and he's not really responsible, but he's still making that. And I, the second item was a gentleman from Palomino Valley. There's a receipt on the clerk's report that, that on a property in, in Palomino Valley that it shows that the water rights are being taken back by, by the water engineer, and, and they've, they've gotten that all straightened out. They've, they've gone and done all the paperwork necessary. There was a death in the family and an estate and then a bunch of stuff. So, if anybody wants a copy of that, I can, there's copies for everybody here, so. I'll just give these to the clerk.
Yeah. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, Commissioner Herman, I need the name of the gentleman you were referring to in the minutes, if you could. Linebaugh? Okay. Is it your request that we change the minutes? Or just note in today's meeting that what, to clarify? Okay, Commissioner Herman just indicated that this clarification in today's meeting will suffice.
Okay. Thank you. Did that need to be on the record?
I think so. I think either Commissioner Herman-
I think either Commissioner Herman or the clerk can, can summarize the sidebar that just happened about some records that were provided to Ms. Parent, and we can go from there.
And I'm going to let Commissioner Herman do that, because I'm unclear as to what you want done with these copies.
They're, they're for information to show that he is going through the processes that are necessary to, to keep his water rights. It was, he's the new owner of the property, and the estate hadn't handled some of this information properly. So he just wanted to clarify that, to make sure that nobody thought he was losing his water rights.
Is, is it your intention that these records be provided to someone, and if so, who or which department?
It's, it was just in the consent items, so I don't know how...
Which item, number?
It was down in the list of received documents. The one from the state engineer, it would have been, yeah.
That would be 8A1.
I, number I, I believe.
Okay.
Or letter I.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So 8A1. 8A1?
I have one thing to add on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one thing to add on that.
Yes, Mr. District Attorney?
It's, it's fine that these records are being provided at this point in time. The open meeting law does require them to be made available to the public at the time that they are made available to the board. So copies, or a copy, should be placed at the back of the room at this point, so that anybody here who wishes to look at those documents can do so.
Thank you. I'll make sure that occurs.
Thank you. So any other comments from Commissioners? We have one public comment, Mr. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene, Dene, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government. And what we have here for the audience is what they call the consent agenda, where they are going to vote on several items all at once, maybe with some discussion, but possibly not, I'm not speaking for or against anything. This is supposedly a housekeeping operation, and added up roughly with at least the numbers they have on here, something in the order of $400,000 worth of items. And then some don't even have the numbers on it. So they're going to vote on that, and again, I'm not speaking for or against it. But as a quick point of privilege, Ms. Herman mentioned a little while ago something about the Nevada Army Guard being empty, and I had never heard about that, and that there were going to be properties out there. Is that news? Maybe you should announce that a little bit louder, because I have not heard about the Nevada Army National Guard leaving instead. At any rate, notwithstanding that, I do approve of the, the regular meeting minutes that you had from the meeting before, even though I didn't, did not intend the entire meeting. And as a point of privilege, I have been through, oh, and by the way, for the folks who might be watching right now, or might watch later in the day, looking at this board, they might wonder what happened. It looks like the same board that was here prior to the election of the new chair. Maybe you could explain to every, I heard you talking something about it, but why did you not go through a change of command? Or did you all just stay in your same positions? People might be wondering about that. She's nodding her head also. Why didn't you have the election as shown on the agenda here? I've been through 17 of these chairman elections through the last many, many, many years, and never, never have the words "for possible action" been on that election thing, and yet you went through the election, but today you're not going to do it. Now, either all of those elections were wrong, and I'm not trying to be a curmudgeon, but I'm just pointing this out and kind of asking the question of what happened? What happened? Maybe the people want to understand. That's all I have to say about this. And I was all prepared to make my announcement of who I was going to support for the new chair, and I think you said the next, you're going to stay in the same positions for the next two weeks? Or I didn't under, we could not hear what was being stated about that. You might want to reiterate that for the people out in TV land.
Thank you, Mr. Dene. So do I have a motion? I need a motion in a second for the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda carries. So let me go back and reopen Item 7 to further explain what just happened. I'm sorry? Well, so, so what just happened was, regardless of whether we have done it before in the, in the past or not, the, our district attorney, who is sitting here today, has decided that we should have posted on those three items for public comment, or for the purposes of public comment. And so because it's not on there, we do not want to violate the open meeting law. And so because it's not on there, we need to reschedule it for a different time where we can put the correct languages. Now, Mr. District Attorney, please correct me and clarify.
No, I think you've got it, Madam Chair. And as to past agendas, you know, I don't have those sitting in front of me. I can't comment with any great specificity on those. But I know that in the past, there was a prior practice with county agendas where there would be sort of a catch-all placed in the introductory blocks of the agenda that, that would say something along the lines of the action items on here have the words "for possible action" next to them, as though they're written next to them throughout. So it was sort of a, an incorporation by reference. With legislative changes and protocol changes, that agenda changed. And so if I had to posit what happened with that, it would be that the old format was with the prior form of the agenda that used to have the catch-all, and then that got removed, but the old format lagged. And so I think that probably is where this came from. But the open meeting law does require it as we sit here today, and it's not there. And so my advice to you as a board is to err on the side of caution and not violate the open meeting law. And you have announced already that that election is going to happen at the end of January.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you clarifying that, and so that is the reason we're moving forward. Okay, so we have approved the consent agenda, and with that, we will move to item, put your glasses on so you can see, to item, to the block vote. Vice Chair Jung, do you have the block vote for us?
I would like to put in the form of a motion, the following items to be put into block: 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, with the note that this should be marked down wherever we're keeping a ledger, Mr. Manager, of shared services, because this will be coming up this legislative session. Item 18, 19, 20, with the same shared services list that will be coming up in this legislative session. 21, 22, and 23.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Commissioner Hartung?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Manager, would you like to read those?
I will. I would like to read those. So I'll begin with Item 9. It's a recommendation to appoint one attorney member and one non-attorney member to the Law Library of Trustees. It is recommended that Michael Cattlemen serve as an attorney member for a two-year term expiring on January 31, 2021, and Kathy Luch serve as a non-attorney member for a two-year term expiring January 31, 2021. Candidates will satisfy the attorney position and a, and non-attorney position required for the Law Library Board of Trustees. Item 10 is a recommendation to approve agreement between Washoe County and Carson City for forensic pathology services provided by the Washoe County Regional Medical Examiner's Office for a period of up to two years, effective retroactively on July 1, 2018. Item 11 is a recommendation to, one, accept the Deferred Compensation Committee's recommendation based on a competitive bidding process that Voya Financial be the record keeper for the Washoe County Deferred Compensation Plans, effective June 1, 2019. And two, to authorize the Director of Human Resources Labor Relations to execute a five-year administrative service agreement and other documents or agreements necessary to engage Voya. Item 12 is a recommendation to approve the reclassifications of a vacant senior appraiser, pay grade P, to a new job classification of personal property coordinator, pay grade N, in the assessor's office. Imaging and records technician, two, job class from pay grade E to pay grade F, a basis administrator, two, pay grade O to senior technology systems administrator, pay grade P, a vacant basis administrator, two, pay grade O to technology systems administrator, two, pay grade LM, technology services department. A vacant librarian, two, pay grade N to librarian, one, pay grade K in the library. A vacant administrative assistant, two, pay grade L to deputy director, pay grade T, Truckee River Flood Management Authority. A vacant senior human services caseworker, pay grade O to human services caseworker, three, pay grade N. And two new positions, one, mental health counselor, two, pay grade P, and one, mental health counselor supervisor, pay grade Q, in the Human Services Agency, as evaluated by the Job Evaluation Committee and authorize human resources to make the necessary changes. Net annual fiscal impact is estimated at $314,615. Item 13 is a recommendation to approve budget amendments in the Capital Improvements Fund to correct fiscal year 2019 budget carryforward in the amount of $1,491,035.64 for grant awards accepted in fiscal year 2018 from the Nevada Division of Lands and the Tower Regional Planning Agency for the Lower Wood Creek Phase 1 Water Quality Improvement Project, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item 15 is a recommendation to approve Canal Street easement agreement by and among the following landowners: Karen Lewis, Kevin and Alicia Redcliff, Hollis Forrester, Robert Judd, Deanne Redcliff, David P. Scott, also known as David P. Orrell, trustee of the David P. Orrell Living Trust in Washoe County for ingress and egress across Washoe County property at 165 Bridge Street in Verde, Nevada. Item 16 is a recommendation to approve Amendment Number 1 to the Agreement for Construction Services, increasing the contract amount by $986,204.55 for a total contract amount of $13,816,204.55, and extending the contract date to August 31, 2019 for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Biosolids Facilities Project. Item 17, which is a shared services issue, recommendation to approve, one, an interlocal agreement with the City of Reno for environmental control inspection services in unincorporated areas of Washoe County, retroactive to January 1, 2019, to provide permitting, inspection, monitoring, and enforcement services; and two, to approve an interlocal agreement for environmental control inspection services in unincorporated areas of Washoe County, between Washoe County and the City of Spars, retroactive to January 1, 2019, to provide permitting, inspection, monitoring, and enforcement services. Item 18 is a recommendation to approve the sole source purchase of a Klein 4900 sonar system, a K-Wing 1 depressor, a 24-volt winch, and one outland remote-operated vehicle at a cost of $171,340, at no cost to the county, using funds from the 2018 William N. Pennington Foundation grant, to be used by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Unit to assist in underwater rescue and recovery. Item 19 is a recommendation to authorize Sheriff's Office to increase fingerprinting fees by 50 cents, at no cost to Washoe County, effective retroactively to one, to January 1, 2019, to match the fingerprinting fee increase by the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Item 20 is a recommendation to approve Federal Transit Administration Section 5310 grant and approve a subrecipient agreement with the Regional Transportation Commission for the enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities for $115,224, with a $40,207 county match, retroactive from October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2020, and authorize Director of Human Services Agency to execute the award, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. And as noted, this is also a shared services issue. Item 21 is a recommendation to approve Human Services Agency to request for a one-time payment in the amount of an additional $35,764 to Alta Vista Mental Health to be awarded. Request proposal RFP 2993-17 to provide supervision and case management services at a shelter, offering temporary assistance for displaced seniors that exceeded the original $118,400 contract, as a result of an increase in staffing requirements for a fiscal year 18 total payment amount of $154,164. Authorize the two renewal periods at the increased amount, and authorize the purchasing and contract manager to revise the purchase order. Item 22 is a recommendation to approve the Human Services Agency's request for a one-time payment in the amount of an additional $125,933.27 to the Washoe County School District for actual expenses incurred to provide out-of-zone transportation for children and foster care allowed under Title 4E of the, of the Social Security Act that exceeded the original $97,714.58 contract amount for fiscal year 18 total payment of $223,647.85, and authorize the purchasing contracts manager to revise the purchase order. And Item 23 is a recommendation to approve a federal 4E subgrant award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Child and Family Services, in the amount of $17,143.44, note with no county match, for Washoe County Child Welfare Services, retroactive July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Authorize Director of Human Services Agency to execute the subgrant award. That's all.
Madam Clerk, I don't see any public comment. Do you have any public comment on any of these items?
I didn't see any either, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the block vote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen and then affirm your vote above.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't.
It's not going to be on the screen?
No.
Okay. Are we affirming above?
No.
Okay. In that case, I believe we, the motion carries with all Commissioners voting aye. Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Fine. And with that, I believe we go back to Item 14, Mr. Manager.
Can I get a clarification, Madam Chair? It's your DA.
I'm sorry.
Can I get a clarification, please, on that last vote?
Yes.
The vote was to approve each of those, the actions connected with those items, not just to have a block vote. Is that correct?
That is correct. The motion was to approve all of them. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. District Attorney. Okay, we go back to Item 14, I believe.
Yes, Item 14. This is a recommendation to approve a CC 230 verification form for the Community Rating System five-year cycle review submittal to the National Flood Insurance Program to maintain a continued reduction in required flood insurance policy premiums for unincorporated Washoe County residents located within designated flood hazard areas. And we have Duane Smith here to provide the background on this item.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Smith. Good morning, and happy new year.
Good morning. For the record, Duane Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects, and happy new year to all the board. The item before you today is a consideration for the submittal of our voluntary participation in the CRS or Community Rating Systems Program under the National Flood Insurance Program. We're very proud of this item. This is, again, as I said, a voluntary program that Washoe County has been participating in since 2008. Through these actions by Washoe County, we're able to provide all of those unincorporated Washoe County residents that live within floodplains a discounted insurance rate if they are participants in the FEMA flood program. So all areas of Washoe County, we all live in a floodplain. These, this program is, creates an opportunity for all of us to receive a discount on flood insurance for our properties. That flood insurance, if you live in a special flood hazard area, which are areas designated as 100-year flood areas or otherwise, known as A, A-O, and O areas, you can receive up to currently a 15% discount. If you live in a non-special flood hazard area, all other areas, Zone X, you can receive up to a 5% discount. These insurance discounts are through, again, the National Flood Insurance Program. So if you have a federally-backed mortgage and you're required to have flood insurance, your flood, your insurance carrier reaches out to the NFIP and has quoted that rate. Through our participation in the CRS program, that rate that's quoted to the insurance company is reflective of a 15% discount. When we started this program off, we weren't quite at the level that we're at now. There's a few more levels to go that we could continue to provide additional flood insurance rate premium discounts through the NFIP. So we're continuing to do that. Look for those opportunities. Increase our participation in the program. This is a five-year cycle review that we've gone through, and the five-year cycle review is, is a very big, very intensive review. Through this part of the review process, they send representatives to Washoe County, they pull out of all of our files, all of our documentation, review the information that's placed on the website, and make sure that we're following all those requirements of the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. So we've gone through that. Now with this request... Now, with this request to continue the submittal into the NFIP, we expect to get and continue the 15% discount for unincorporated Washoe County residents.
Mr. Smith, did you say every single property in the unincorporated county is under this discount program?
Yes.
So, there is no map specific? So, every single property in the unincorporated county is in a flood zone? A special flood zone, actually. Special flood hazard area?
No. For clarification, thank you for the question, for clarification through the chair, all properties exist within a flood zone. FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program recognize that all properties can be flooded.
Oh, across the country?
Across the country.
Every single property in the country is in a flood zone?
Everybody has the potential to be flooded. There are certain properties that exist within special flood hazard areas. For instance, within 100-year designated floodplains, A or AO.
So, does every single community across the country get this discount?
No. Only those communities that choose to participate in this additional process of going through and verifying with the flood insurance program, the CRS program, the Community Rating System program, working through the National Flood Insurance Program, can you become eligible to receive those discounts for your, for your residents. We started this process in 2008. It's a, it's a great program. So, every...
Who subsidizes the discounts? Like, how does the insurance do this? What, do you know where, is there a federal funding, or?
The subsidy is basically the same, again, through the chair, to the vice chair, is basically the same as a Good Driver program. It's, the cost of that is really borne by the entire program participants. And so, those that aren't in the CRS program, those communities that aren't in the CRS program, they're basically subsidizing those communities that are in the CRS program.
How is that?
It's the, like I said, it's very similar to a...
Well, use your, don't use an analogy. Explain to me how people who aren't partaking in this because they choose not to, why wouldn't every community do this?
I think that the answer is that it does take time, energy, and effort for, for an organization such as our own to invest in this program. And I think in, in previous staff reports, because I've brought this item before, that I've indicated that we spend somewhere in the, in the range of $30,000 of staff time for the benefit of over $140,000 of discounts for our residents.
Does the cities of Reno and Sparks participate in this that you're aware of?
I'm not aware that they have chosen to participate in the CRS program at this time.
Can I get a report on that, Mr. Manager? And why they're not participating in it as well? If they, I mean, they also have some pretty serious flooding in the downtown core, so I would think that they would also participate. But that's just me speculating, and it's okay if you don't know if they do or they don't. So, tell me again how you analogize this to a Good Driver. Can you use it with this specific example?
Yeah, again, through the chair, to the vice chair. Yes, the total number of program participants in the nation pay into the flood insurance program.
So, we are paying in, or the individual policyholders?
The individual policy owners across the country pay into the National Flood Insurance Programs, program.
Everybody pays into that, or just?
Every, everybody that chooses or are required. There's two categories of people. Those that have federally backed mortgages, their insurance, or their mortgage companies require them to carry flood insurance.
Everybody.
If they're located within a floodplain.
Which is everybody, according to you.
Those that don't carry a federally backed mortgage, for instance, if you've paid off your home...
No, no, no. Excuse me. Everybody that has a federally backed mortgage, which could be a VA loan, it can be a lot of things that are federally backed mortgages. You said everybody that has a federally backed mortgage, no matter where they live, is required by their federally backed mortgage to carry flood insurance, correct?
For those that are located within special flood hazard zones.
Okay. But, so that's two different things. Everybody lives in a flood zone, but only certain people are in special hazard flood zones, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the special hazard people are required by the VA or whomever is the federally backed loan to carry this, and a portion of what they, when they are carrying this flood is going into this national repository, which then, kind of like healthcare for all, the healthy people are paying a little bit more because the unhealthy people will probably use it. It's a better analogy for me. I don't understand safe driving. Ask my insurance provider. I'm a, I'm a heavy breaker, and I get a C on my, every time that I get my, I'm not a speeder, heavy breaker, but if, if my insurance guy wants me to run into things, happy to do it. So, it, so don't, please don't use that. But, so, everybody's paying in, in the special hazard zone, to this bank, essentially, and then the discounts are meted out to those communities who take the time and the staff time, taxpayers' time, to apply for the program and get the 15% discount, correct?
Your analogy is that, or you're spot on. Just to add a little clarification of that, the program has different tiers, and so we're in the tier right now that allows us to provide 15% discount through our efforts to our community. The first tier is a 5% discount, the second is a 10, the third is a 15.
So, is this based since 2008? We've moved up?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
We are doing better and better.
So, why wasn't this in block? I would have happily put this in block, but I, but I'm glad that I asked you these questions. And then, we are, how do we get this message out to people, or does their insurance adjuster already know it? You guys belong to this, you get this off the top. I mean, are we demonstrating to taxpayers, hey, this is your tax dollars at work yet again?
It's a great question, again, through the chair to you, the vice chair, is that every year, we send out letters to those people that live within special, special flood hazard zones.
Okay.
I.e. 100-year zones.
Yep.
So, that they are aware that this program is in place and in existence. It's also up on the National Flood Insurance Program's websites, and it's also identified on our website.
Do insurance personnel have to abide by this, or do our constituents have to educate them? Or does something immediately come up and go, they get this discount?
Yeah, that's another great question. I'm glad you asked that. Because a lot of the insurance carriers don't realize that this insurance discount is being applied to their flood insurance. So, when, if I'm a resident that has a home within a, within a 100-year floodplain, and I go in to get my insurance, and I call up my agent, he goes, or she goes to the NFIP's website. Because we've already submitted to the NFIP, that discount automatically is included.
Awesome. Okay.
And so, nobody loses out on that.
Right.
It's not a responsibility of the resident to make sure it happens.
Or the insurance person.
It already happens.
Okay.
But, a lot of times, though, we do get phone calls where residents don't realize that they're already getting that. They're saying, hey, show me on my premium.
Yeah.
And so, we're happy to help them answer those questions. Because this is, again, it's a great program that Washoe County's been participating in.
Can I get a list of everybody in D3 unincorporated who has received a letter identifying them that they are allowed? Actually, can you just do it through the whole county for all of us, just so we can look at it parcel by parcel?
I'm, I'm...
Would that be the whole unincorporated county?
I'm happy to send you the list of all those residents that received letters informing them about this program that live within those special flood hazard zones.
So, I would like their name and their address, and what district?
Done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also like a report back. Is the cities of Reno and Sparks participating in this and getting the rest of the incorporated people also a discount if we are eligible for such? And if not, presumably, why? That's probably not your job. I'm asking the manager. So, thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. I am ready to make...
Thank you, Vice Chair Jiang. The reason this wasn't put in block was because I had a couple of questions, and I wanted an explanation that Mr. Smith could provide us. So, Commissioner Hartong also has a question, so we'll let him go, and then I'll ask my questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very kind. Mr. Smith, as mentioned in the staff report, we spent about $30,000 on this, and I, I mentioned several years, a couple of years ago, when we, we had flooding region-wide. It would be nice if we had a program, and I don't know how we fund it exactly, that's, that's always the, the key here, but where we assist residents with their flood insurance, especially those who qualify, because ultimately, it could save us millions of dollars by helping them to insure themselves. And, and so, it's, it, it just makes sense to me that, that we would give them some kind of assistance. And I'm not talking about any area specifically. I mean, there are a number of areas that, that could be subject to this issue, and so consequently, I'd love to, I'd love to see what, what those kinds of numbers would be. Work with them to see who could possibly qualify, how we would go through a qualification process. Because ultimately, it could save us a ton of money, I'll just put it that way, by assisting them with insurance, you know, and, and Washoe County's going to be out there cleaning up. That doesn't mean that that's not going to be the case, but it, it could, it could remedy some of the issues that we've seen, especially, I mean, north and south, both. So, I'd, I'd like to just have a, have a deeper conversation about that and the, and the possibility. And maybe it's just by in-the-sky thinking. I don't, I, you know, there's a lot of good ideas out there, but then when you start to crunch the numbers, you recognize immediately that, that the numbers get so big that it's not, you know, it's not worth it. And so, I, I get that part of the issue also. So, maybe we can have a, a deeper conversation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. So, I had a couple of questions, and actually, Commissioner, Vice Chair Jiang really asked one of them, and that is to provide us with information on how many people actually live in those zones that are, not that everybody's in a flood zone, but those concerning zone areas. How many people in Washoe County, actually, throughout the county, actually live within one of those? And then additionally, I'd like to know how many of them are participating in this program. So, you know, if they're participating in this program, even after they've paid their house off, they still, you know, they're still in an area where they could get flood insurance and get the 15% discount. So, that's really the information that I'm sort of looking for, and I, I would really like to see that. Because I think, as Commissioner Hartong pointed out, it's very important for us to know, for our constituents who live in some of these flood zones, truthfully, I don't know. Well, I, I have the river in my district, so I guess there's a number of people who live in one of these types of flood zones in my district, but I'd really like to know, you know, from a countywide perspective, how many residents do we have who actually are in one of these kinds of special districts? So, if you could provide that to us, and then provide us with a list of how many of our constituents are actually taking, participating and taking part in this program.
Again, to the chair, there's information I did provide in the staff report.
Okay.
Indicating how many currently take advantage of this program that are located within the special flood hazard zones. On the NFIP website, there's some additional information that provides how many total policies exist within Washoe County. With a little bit of manipulation, I could take that and break that into each of the special flood hazard zones to show how many residents live within those special flood hazard zones, and then how many of those choose to or are required to participate within the NFIP, and then subsequently, receive the benefit of the 15% discount. And I'm happy to break that, break that down and provide that to you in a, in a memo format or however the county manager so chooses.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate that. Commissioner Herman?
I know this is a little bit off the subject in a way, but it's still about insurance. How many people in Lemon Valley that had flood insurance actually got relief?
Through the chair to the commissioner, I do not know that exact number. I'm aware of some of the residents that did receive benefit from NFIP, but I'm happy to come back with more solid numbers as requested.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartong?
Thank you. Couple of questions. And, and perhaps, one of the things that we need to do is, and I don't know exactly how we do this, but provide an ombudsman with, with respect to some of those insurance issues, especially when, when we're talking about flood. You know? And, and maybe there's already one at the state that, that may already exist. I know when we had some problems with our insurance with an extremely ill family member, the, the state stepped in as the ombudsman, and it was a, I mean, couldn't have done it without them. It was a, it was a wonderful, wonderful interaction, and perhaps, again, that already exists with the state. My other question is, Mr. Smith, what happens to, because I, I know in, in Spanish Springs, we have, we have literally removed a lot of houses from the floodplain by adding in a, a stormwater utility. What happens with those houses that have been removed? Are they still required to carry flood insurance?
Only, again, if you're located within a special flood hazard zone, would you be required to carry flood insurance if you have a federally backed mortgage. When floodplains change, which they do, those residents that were formerly in a floodplain that come out are now not required to participate. They may choose to continue to participate, and they will so, if they choose to do that, they will pay much lower rates.
Right.
Because they're now not within one of the special flood hazard zone areas.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Actually, one, one last question. I do, I did see here that you put in the staff report that there are 600 residential flood insurance policies for residents. What I'm really interested in is not the number of policies, but the number of actual residents who live in one of these. So, if you could provide that to us in, in a written report, that would be great also. Thank you very much.
Absolutely happy to do that.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? We do have one public comment, Ms. Tammy Holstel. So, we'll open public comment.
Tammy Holstel, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. One of the issues that comes up when it comes to the flood insurance is the fact that flood insurance covers flooding inside the home, but it doesn't cover the structure of the home when there is what they call, in industry terms, dirt differential. Clay, anything that is built on clay, the development of Prado North that you approved will be built on clay. When water gets around those homes, and that water saturates into the ground, it moves, it shifts, and then the structure of it is in bad condition and is not covered by any insurance unless you want to spend thousands of dollars to have that kind of insurance, which working people don't have. You know? And that goes back to the same thing as, which is a little off-topic, you know? That sewer plant is on that same dirt differential. Again, the insurance that you are trying to get, make sure everybody has, is not going to do anybody any good when it comes to the structure of their homes if they are built on clay. It is important to know what type of soil you are building homes on or in, because it makes a difference. Thank you.
I see no more public comments, so Vice Chair Jiang?
Madam Chair, I'm willing to make a motion, but I would like to know from Community Services Division, I feel like all of our homes are built on clay. I know if I dig, how much is that? Four inches? Six inch? I don't know. If I dig this far down, I find balls of clay in my, if I don't amend my soil, or, more importantly, do raise beds and bring in my own soil, that's all I ever hit is clay. So, to the point, I want to know how much of us are built on clay, and what are the mitigation factors that we are asking developers, especially now that they're coming in droves to build here, to, I don't know, amend the soil, change the, the way that the hydrology works and that, people much smarter and more educated than me that know how to do that with credentials? Because I, I think that is a good question to ask people when they are looking to further develop, but also to look at, as a countywide, what kind of, what are our soils look like? And I live right downtown, and that's, and mine's clay. So, that's, and, and along with that, thank you, Mr. Smith, and I am approving this, and thank you, staff, spending the time to at least get the discount. I would like to see more information, and probably we should do this regionally, as a group, probably could teach Sparks and Reno a few tricks rather than them reinventing the whole will and spending staff time, taxpayer time, to create these benefits for them as well. So, that is a motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jiang. I have a motion to approve this. Do I have a second? All right. I have a motion in a second. Vice Chair Jiang, will you erase yourself off that? Thank you. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote above. Motion carries four nothing with Commissioner Lucy absent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I don't know exactly where we're going now. 24?
We are going to item 24. And Council has advised that, again, there's a, an agenda error at the bottom. You'll see it says for possible motion. That should say for possible action. So, what I would suggest is that we go ahead and hear this item, we can, we can then... then continue it to our next meeting.
Okay.
But we would like to make a presentation for this. Let me read it real quick, and then we'll have the quick presentation. This is a recommendation to accept a subaward from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Welfare and Supportive Services Child Care Licensing in the amount of $324,907, no county match, retroactive to July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, to provide childcare licensing and monitoring within Washoe County, authorize the creation of one FTE Human Services Coordinator position and two FTE Human Service caseworker two, three positions, effective and contingent on JEC review and approval, funded 100% by the DWSS Child Care Licensing Grant Award, and as such, if grant funding is reduced or eliminated, the position hours will be reduced and/or the positions will be abolished accordingly. Direct the Human Resources Department to make the necessary staffing adjustments as evaluated by the Job Evaluation Committee, authorize the Director of Human Services Agency to execute the subaward documents, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments, and-
Thank Commissioner, Manager, Ms. Howell.
Good morning, Commissioners, Amber Howell for the record, I serve as the Director for the Washoe County Human Services Agency. This is a very exciting opportunity for Washoe County. This is the first time that Washoe has received any funds from the Childcare Development Block Grant. It is a state grant that is administered by welfare at the, the state level, and so historically, we've never gone after these funds, but Clark County and the state utilize them quite frequently. When we started looking at some grant opportunities with our big NAMS project, one of the areas that we had a gap in was the daycare, and how we were gonna fund daycare slots. So what ends up happening for a family is there are so many slots that providers have, or daycare providers have within the community, and once those slots are filled up, there's no other slots available for people who can't afford daycare. So what we went after was a significant amount of funds to do two things. One is to increase our license capacity, because Washoe County is growing, and as the population grows, we need more staff, because more daycares open and slots, so this allows us to take care of our capacity needs projected at about a 10% growth each year. The second piece, and probably more exciting for this audience, is really about the slots that we're getting for the NAMS campus, so we asked for 50 to 75 slots, which of course would be 100% funded by the State of Nevada, and we received our total request. So that is money that Washoe County does not have to put into the daycare program at the NAMS campus, and will be 100% provided by the state ongoing. So that's really exciting, because that's an area where we had a gap in revenue stream for that very critical piece at the NAMS campus for kids.
Thank you very much, Ms. Howell. This, it's interesting, because it was just a big news thing on the national news about how daycare is becoming a major problem in communities around the country, and particularly in growing communities like ours, it's, it's a real serious problem, and so this is great news, really glad to hear this, we're so excited about the NAMS campus, and I know there's a lot of work going on with it, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Hartong?
Just a comment, um, I don't think, I don't think daycare is, is any more of a problem now, and maybe I'm gonna be stepping out of my lane, it was a problem for my wife and I 30 years ago. I mean, it was something that we, that we struggled with also, and this is great, because there, there wasn't a lot of assistance out there, so I'm, I'm thrilled. Um, you know, daycare's a tough thing, I mean, it's a, it's a tough thing for, for a growing family, and, and we had to really adjust our schedules to, to try to accommodate it, so kudos to you, Ms. Howell, and, and, you know, it's a, it's a necessary thing to try to help these families, because otherwise, what happens is, is then you, you know, in the 60s, when we were kids, we were just left alone. And my older sister-
Happens still.
My older, my older sister was-
Didn't you heat lead paint? No, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hartong.
Duh.
Calm down, Commissioners, let's not get over-
Who didn't?
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Commissioner Lucy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, you know, and, and Commissioner Hartong's correct, I mean, obviously, I have two children in, in daycare, and it's, it's an expensive venture for parents, but it's important, now, as Washoe County has a licensing agency for these healthcare facility, I mean, for these childcare facilities, they truly are taking people's most prized possession there, I mean, when you drop your children off, you expect them to be safe, secure, protected, making sure that they're getting the best treatment all day long, and I think as, as a governing agency, it is of the utmost importance, and as we continue to grow as a community, I know the daycare that I take my kids to is booked, full, and there's a waiting list for kids to get into, and I know that's consistent around the region, that these are, and so when you have that kind of load in our region, I think it's of utmost power, uh, importance that we consistently are overseeing these with, you know, and if we don't have the staff to really make sure that these kids are being taken care of, once again, we talk about vulnerable, vulnerable populations, this is one of those vulnerable populations that can't one speak for themselves, usually tell what happened, it's important that we do that, so, yeah, I'm absolutely 100% in support of this, it's, it's an imperative that we continue to monitor and do this to the utmost of our capabilities, so congratulations, Ms. Howell.
Okay, good, I see no public comment, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manager.
So as I had-
Oh, we can't, thank you.
As I had suggested, what I would, what I would think you should do is, is actually take no action today, and then staff will reinitiate this as an action item on our next meeting.
Okay, so this will appear on our agenda on, on the 15th.
Can it just be a consent item?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right, Mr. Manager.
Next item is one of two public hearings we have today, this is a public hearing, second reading, adoption of an ordinance, admitting chapter five of the Washoe County Code.
Madam Clerk?
Alrighty, Madam Chair, this, if adopted, will be ordinance number 1628, an ordinance admitting chapter five of the Washoe County Code by repealing sections of the travel regulation ordinance related to per diem allowances for travel advances and receipts for transportation by public conveyance, and by revising sections of the travel regulation ordinance relating to the policy of the Board of County Commissioners related to travel by county officers and employees, registration fees for courses, seminars, conferences, and workshops, requests for permission to travel, travel accounts and special accounts, emergency travel, recruitment expenses, moving expenses, payment of travel expenses, transportation expenses, living expenses, local business expenses, legislative and lobbying expenses, advance payments, travel advance, advances constituting a lien on a county officer or employee's accrued wages, filing travel claims, travel authorization for employees performing services in outlying areas of Washoe County, department regulations concerning travel, use of county vehicles, use of private vehicles, travel and moving expenses upon an employee's transfer, prohibition of salary advances. This was previously bill number 1815.
Would you like a presentation? It's a second reading, yeah. So no questions for staff? I'm looking for a motion. Oh, it is a public hearing, um, public hearing, and I see no public who have requested hearing, so with that, we will close the public hearing part, and now I'm looking for a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance number 1628?
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And I did put this in your-
Please cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote above. Motion carries 5-0 with all Commissioners voting. Thank you very much. Next is item number 26.
Item, item 26 is the second of our public hearings, this is also second reading, adoption of an ordinance admitting chapter five of the Washoe County Code.
Madam Clerk?
If adopted, this will bear ordinance number 1629, an ordinance admitting chapter five of the Washoe County Code by repealing a section related to the Community Relations Program, by repealing a section related to the Management Services Program, by repealing all provisions related to the Employment and Training Department, by repealing a section related to telephone toll calls, by revising provisions related to meetings of the Board of County Commissioners, by revising provisions related to the powers and duties of the county manager and assistant county managers, and by revising a section concerning the county manager's expenditures for incidental food and entertainment expenses for certain activities.
Thank you very much, this is a public hearing, I see no public signed in. Anyone wishing to testify? We will close the public comment, bring it back to the board, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance number 1629.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen and affirm your vote above. Motion carries 5-0 with all Commissioners voting, thank you. All right, Mr. Chair, Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, item 27 was requested to be removed from today's agenda, item 28, there is no need for the possible closed session, so that brings us to item 29, which is our final public comment period.
Okay, we will open our final public comment, I see no public comment, Madam Clerk, do you have anybody wishing to speak?
I have no one signed in.
Okay, I have no one signed in, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for item 30.
Item 30 is Commissioner County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards, commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas. Madam Chair, I do have one item in response to an early discussion related to cry wolf and the senior discount, the senior discount is still available, so if any of us, if, if there are individuals' homes who have not received their senior discount, and they are eligible for that, they feel eligible for that, they should just call 311, and that discount will be put into place.
The senior discount, okay, good, good, well, that's nice to know, Commissioner Hartong, thanks for bringing it forward. Okay, any other, Commissioner Lucy?
Madam Chair, just really quick, for Commissioner Jung's question earlier in regards to the bus issues in regards to transit, um, the reliability issue that one of the constituents did bring up, you know, one of the, I did receive an email during the meeting from Lee Gibson's at staff, that the reliability issue is because of the inability right now currently to hire drivers, and we're having a challenge with our operator in hiring drivers, but it's supposedly getting better. It's not an issue of cost, it's, it's, or the cost is the issue, not revenue, and, and so one of the issues, we have to pay higher money to get the drivers, and right now, the, the wages are a challenge in the market of trying to procure some of these drivers, so we're working with our transit provider to get those drivers on bus, so then, once we get drivers, then we can get some, some more reliability on the, on the transit system. So that was the email that I received, and I wanted to issue that out to everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy, Commissioner Herman?
I just had been talking to a constituent who was here yesterday, and they noticed that this wall was not up, and so they wondered why it was back up.
Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, I think we've discussed previously, the, 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 beginning two years ago, um, the Sheriff's Office had, had provided my office with a number of recommendations related to safety and security, including a number of, of change, physical changes to the, to the chambers, as well as some procedural changes in the chambers, and the, the panels that are in place were a part of that recommendation, they are designed to be portable, taken down, put back up. Yesterday's event, because of the number of individuals that were being sworn in, the wall, the panels were removed, and there was a number of additional security measures in place yesterday during that meeting when the panels were down, and we had additional security officers, as well as, we probably had upwards of 25 or 30 deputies and others in the room. So we, we had made that change yesterday, and today, as a regular meeting, when we don't have those additional security measures, again, based on the recommendations that I had received from the Sheriff's Office, the panels were put back in place.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anything else, questions, comments? With that, we are adjourned.